We do have a public comment opportunity for anyone who would have a comment to make. Those discussions are very limited, but because they're not on the agenda. So we can't take any action on anything a person might bring up. But just so that you know, we have that opportunity. Sam?
I just want to say that I noticed that there was a big leak that was repaired by the water department, by the DPW department. And it was so significant that we may not, you know, from what I understand, we may not need a well as quickly as we had thought. Is that right?
Well, I would tell you that the work that they have done over the past probably eight or nine months, since having some new employees in the particular, the water department and a new DPW superintendent, we have found, not we, I love the we, I've never picked up a shovel. But the team has, I don't know, stopped a tremendous number of leaks, significant leaks. And as a result, our pumps aren't working as hard and we're using less water because we're not losing more, you know, water than we were ever supposed to. I know that there's a gallons percentage that they could talk to us about a significant. Mark, are you aware of that?
Well, just that one leak the other day, I believe they said that they found, and it's been leaking for some time before the crew that's in there now. But they said it was 100 gallons a minute. So this is what, 140,000 gallons a day, which
It's a lot of water.
is a quarter of what the town's used to.
Wow. That could be very good use. DEP could be very happy about that. In addition to the one that was behind the police or the Sandy building.
That was down by the old fire station.
Yeah.
So, not sure about that, Sam. We may still need a well only because if one well goes down, the other well cannot supply the entire town of Barry. So we need backup and redundancy. But what, the work-
It's good news.
I'm not bad with that disparity, I think, just saying that's what, because I understand we have a water problem.
We do. We do, yeah. No, thank you for bringing that up because they worked hard and they fixed a very serious long-term leak
Yep.
the other day, which is having a great impact now. Our pumps are shutting off. They're at a rest period.
12 hours, I believe.
Yeah, and we're pumping a lot less water.
And it used to be 24/7.
They were on 24/7.
Oh, really?
So, that was a good point to bring up.
All I know is that when I used to, when the water gets turned out, it's always there.
Well, we'd like to keep it that way. Okay, having no other public comment that I see, let's move on to the approval of meeting minutes that have been presented, starting with the October 6th meeting minutes that have been prepared and were provided to you via email and are now before us. Those taking a look at October 6th?
Make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of October 6th, 2025, for release.
I'll second that.
We have a motion being seconded to approve the meeting minutes of October 6th, 2025, for public release. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We also have September 24th to take a look at. And those have been provided, I'm sorry, is it the 20, I have September 18th, I'm sorry. September 18th is my stack.
Yeah, so 24th is a regular meeting.
I just got to shift around. Okay. So the September 24th meeting minutes, if we could address those.
I'm going to approve meeting minutes for September 24th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion being seconded to approve September 24th meeting minutes, and those would be for public release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Moving along, we have two other new sets of meetings. These are executive sessions, meetings, minutes, and they will not be approved for release, but just for our records. September 18th, I have a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes for Thursday, September 18th, on 2025, and those will not be for release at this time.
I'll second that.
We have a motion being seconded to approve September 18th, 2025, executive session, but not for release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, moving on to September, oh yeah, September 24th meeting minutes, got it. The executive session.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of September 24th, 2025, the executive session, not for release at this time.
Second.
We have a motion being seconded to approve the September 24th executive session part of the 24th meeting, but not for release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, having managed our way through that, I do believe that we have, I think we'll go directly to, here, I just, we can go directly to town administrator report.
All right, I gave you all a copy of it. So, continue to work on procurement, as always. The bid packages for the DPW vehicles were awarded and contracted to Advantage Truck Group.
Excellent.
The bid package for the paving will publish on October 23rd and will be opened on November 10th. The bid package for the heating will also be published on October 23rd and will be opened on the 12th of November. Bid package for the sewer compact loader was published on 10/9 and is due 10/27. And I've completed the contract for the engineering services for the well location and sent that to David Craven for his approval, so he can get that signed if it all looks okay to him. For the grants, we're still working on the High Plains Park. We've identified trash cans, working with him, that he thinks will work there.
Great.
And Tom George is getting quotes for the fence repair. The Green Communities grant is fully executed, the contract's fully executed. And I have a meeting set up next, is that next week, on next, October 27th, with CMRPC, National Grid, and Guardian for the next steps for that. We've had another anonymous public records request from that same Mass Records Act. It shows a copy of the last appointment slip for the town accountant, copies of contract with Mask Munifin, copies of MMA emails sent for job placement ads from July 1 to October 1, copy of letter sent by Inspector General regarding the allegations of double dipping, and that is in quotation marks because those are the requesters' words, not mine, copies of all correspondence to the Inspector General regarding required changes. We had another one for 160 Lane Road from a Jesse Russell of GZA. Jesse is a scientist, as he or she signed the email, looking for any public records for permits violations, tank, et cetera, for 160 Lane Road. And as is typical, a lot of times we'll get requests for bids for plant holders from certain bids. And somebody from the American Procurement Council, Inc., wants the sewer bid package for the compact loader. Wants it to be available.
Now, we have one for permits violations and tanks, and for what period were they looking for that?
Just anything.
Since forever?
Anything we could find, yes. So I emailed all the boards and commissions and committees and departments. We actually don't have a lot.
Yeah, it's typical when a property might be up for sale that they do an environmental study to see if there's any impact. So they'll reach out to us, the Fire G, Conservation, any records that might be available.
So we actually don't have much to send. But that will be sent, I believe I have everything now, so that'll probably be sent tomorrow. As far as meetings, I mean, I'm not going to read through all of those, you guys can read those. And then other work, oh, the Green Communities through CMRPC, that's just about done. Sandy helped me out with that as well with the electricity use. And it should be submitted next week. I just have a couple of things from the building department that I need. I mean, there isn't anything else, so note, I don't think. That's pretty much it? Yes, Sam?
Sam have a question?
Did you say some of the requests were anonymous?
Yes.
Yeah, they're all anonymous.
Yep.
You have to.
Even though-
Yep, it doesn't matter.
They didn't sign it?
No.
Well, there's an email attached, but we don't know who's on the other side of the email.
There's an email, but it's not one that you can find out who it is. And that's, it's something that's legal, but it's appropriate, irritating, but-
It's legal by the government?
Yes.
You get something anonymous, huh?
Yep. Yep, you still have to answer it.
And you can't charge anybody, right?
Not for something like this. It doesn't take, what they're wanted doesn't take enough time to, it would take more time to charge it.
No, but you can't charge anybody because you don't know who to charge.
This is true. This is true.
Well, somebody, somehow, somebody could figure out how it was, I guess. I don't know. Okay. So, we haven't had many of those anonymous ones. We usually have individuals tied to the request. Okay. Select board reports, please do not think that this is all my stuff. So I would like you to all chime in when and if appropriate. I know. So, department inventory, we are working on and haven't had a lot of time to really delve into that with any kind of specificity. But I think, Mark, you've been sort of working on figuring out what is it we exactly have in every building, every place, every piece of equipment, so that we could have an inventory that we would feel if an insurance claim were to be put in, that we would have information that would be able to substantiate our claim.
Yeah, we're going to have to really buckle down on that and move forward because everything that I had, anything that I had done, it had to do with basically the DPW because that's what we agreed to in the meeting, we voted on. But as far as everything else, I think all the department heads have to do a list of tools and equipment, what they have as far as inventory, we have to-
Do you think that, what would you feel, Melanie, would be a reasonable timeframe to get that done?
Well, I would like for them to start submitting it with their annual reports every year, which should come in January anyway, after the calendar year ends, if you do a calendar year here. So I can notify them now that it'll be due with the annual report. That way they have a couple of few months to get it done, if that works for you guys.
As before, I mean, I would certainly go and help with the DPW director with that. Rich, I've been, you know, I don't know if it's something that we need to talk, vote on for you helping with the fire and-
Yeah, I mean, whoever needs help, you know, I'm certainly around you, around whatever. But it's an important task. And if we have a natural disaster, we have a fire in our community, we lose a building, we don't, honestly, I don't think we know what's in it.
No, we don't.
And so I think we really need to get a capture of what the taxpayers own and the condition of it, the age of it.
And what can be discarded.
Correct. Correct, yep.
Which our trucks, that we're getting rid of, they're up on municipal as we speak.
Oh, they are?
Yep.
I would not know that. We don't have a policy for disposition?
What's that?
We don't have a policy of, for disposition, to like dispose of town goods?
We do, we follow the statute, which is first, you know, go to, try to get rid of them through the town. We do, you know, a town auction for some kinds of things, and so-
In the past, we've done municipal auctions, international, things like that, so it's all legit, you know.
With the big equipment?
Yep. We've gone through the equipment at the DPW trucks, excess surplus, stuff that we don't, you know. A lot of it's close to being junk, but we went through and listed all that stuff throughout the winter. And they had just put it up recently.
Can I make a recommendation?
You may. I'm not a department head.
Can we make a form for departments to fill out of what they're disposing of, how they're disposing of it, and make sure that the boards have votes to dispose of it before it goes up on municipal, so that we know what has gone out, that the board is all aware of it, where it's gone, and how much-
Well, nothing's gone yet, so I mean, you could probably do that. I mean, you'd be awarded the bid, I don't know how, you know, when the bids are all timed out, I mean,
Quite frankly, I don't think we're going to get a lot of people looking to take the stuff we've got on municipal.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just a legit way to get rid of it.
Yeah. I think, I think it's just good to have the paper trail and good to know that all of the select board members are aware of what's going, how it's going.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean?
That's-
Yeah, it's a good thing to know.
So, starting next time, I'll make up a form.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, Valley Road Bridge update. You all know that the Valley Road Bridge has been closed now for a period of months due to the fact that the state has indicated it unsafe. The state did work with our DPW superintendent to say that there may be a way to shore things up for, through an engineering study, and thus, after that, to making some changes in the, shall we say, the support system of the bridge for a one-way. In other words, you would be able to, with a light, you go one-way because it's just not, it's going to cost as well $350,000 just to get it, shall we say, one lane, probably useful until 2029 or 2030, when the state will come in and actually fix the bridge. Now, we could decide not to do this. We're going to pay this out of chapter 90 money. And obviously, chapter 90 money, we'd like to be able to restore roads that are going to stay roads for a long time. This is one that now we have an engineering study. I think it's $9,000 that we have allocated to engineering is to do exactly what the state engineers have asked us to do in order to make it a safe, one-way bridge. It would still preclude large trucks going over it. And I'm sure there'll be a weight limit that they will give to us. So we have authorized the engineering, and we suspect that there will be no, it will not be open until, at best, in the midsummer. Because by the time the state does what the state does, and then they actually, we get in there with a crew that can do it, it will definitely be into the summer months, we think, just as an update. Grant awards, Melanie, I think we do have a police department grant award, thanking the chief for his work.
Yes. So Chief Foren sent over, he got a JAG grant for $28,000 for drug enforcement and detective work. Sandy, I'll give this to you after. Municipal road safety grant of $24,116.40 for dedicated traffic safety patrols, which is for distracted impaired driving. Separate grants, three separate grants from the Stetson School and Tom Forrest Memorial Foundation, totaling almost $15,000, allowing us, allowing them to replace and upgrade all desktop computers at the PD. There were nine computers. Mya Wellness Grant for $3,990.99 to support officers' mental health. So total received to date is $71,107.39. And he has some in process. Seven Hills Foundation renegotiating a pilot to facilitate a cruiser. Chobin Regional School District to assist with school resource officer funding. Mya Risk Management Grant for traffic safety signage and equipment.
Very good.
Good effort to answer my question.
Yes, absolutely.
Now, also that we have the information about the school resource officer update. We know with the loss of the override, it's impossible to stay, to maintain the current staffing patterns in the police department that would give us 24/7 coverage, plus the coverage every day, 180 days at the high school, middle high school, where the school resource officer spends his or her most of their time. The school, we have met with the school to see if they can be of some help and assistance with this. And the school has submitted a grant for $30,000. Whether they will get it or not, they're hopeful, but it's always an iffy thing when you're trying to get grants in this particular environment, financial environment. So at any rate, there's work on both ends, from the chief's end and from the superintendent, in order to try to make certain that we can fund this school resource officer. Now, some people would say, why do we need that? But I think it's pretty obviously why we need that. If there is a place where there could be some significant issues of concern on a daily basis that could be over the top compared to anything else that could happen to the town, it's going to happen at that middle high school or the elementary school. And not having the police there, presence there on a daily basis would probably be short-sighted on our part. So we're working very hard with the chief in order to try to keep 24/7 coverage and the school resource officer. 24/7 coverage may not be possible for us for the entire year based upon what it costs us for overtime and the, it just may not be possible. So we know we can't do the school resource officer and seven-day 24 service. So they're making some, they're making some adjustments. And the chief is working very hard on grants and other things to try to mitigate the losses that we had with our budget presentation.
Was this paid for by three towns?
That, well, technically, if the school resource officer is paid for by a grant that the schools get, that will be pretty simple. Currently, since its inception, the school resource officer has been paid totally by the town of Barry.
How do they change that?
Well, okay, that when, and I was the superintendent there when they made this decision. And the decision was not to have this be a school employee that the school would pay for. Because the police did not want not to have control over this, over how the person would be trained. Because if they're there to do police work, the school superintendent shouldn't be in charge of that. I was okay with that. The school committee was okay with that. However, we do believe that there should be an effort on the other town's part, that this should be paid for, at least a portion of it, by the school district, even though the school district doesn't have the opportunity to manage that employee, that they would pay that money to the town of Barry in order to keep the school resource officer there full-time. So that is in the works and, you know, and everybody is very cooperative in trying to work this through because obviously the schools want that school resource officer there. The chief knows he should have a school resource officer there. We know that we should have a school resource officer there. So together we'll figure something out. So that's where sort of that is. So that's a very critical piece of staffing that we really have to work on. Sad news is the Chamberlain Hill Route Road Repair Work Grant for the repair, that would have been the resurfacing in, I think it was also working with the runoff and water issues on the roads. We had hoped to have that grant, but that, a lot of these grants have been held up. So we will not have access to that grant this year, so therefore, we will not be doing that project. We feel badly about that, but there's not much we can do. We've also sent information around, looking for a committee, and we'll be looking, obviously, for people who might want to serve on a committee to explore the idea of going to town meeting, asking that the town meeting people would be interested in the Community Preservation Act and what that could or could not do for the town. It's a way in which to modify how we do certain projects. It's something that's supported by the state. It used to be a 50/50, not so much anymore. But anyway, we're going to be studying it and bringing it to the town. So it's been to the town meetings before and been voted down, but we'll try again. Upcoming union negotiation and contract renewals. We do have police and we do have DPW with their contracts expiring. This is the last year of a three-year, so those negotiations would need to proceed probably, or begin. It usually takes many months. So we will start that work and hope that we will have resolution by June. Update on personnel policy, we have lots of updates to do. Would you say that's fair?
Yes, I would say that's fair. And I did not, all the new policies that we had made and submitted and were accepted by the Inspector General's office, I need to have all of you sign them.
Yep.
I know they were voted on, but they need to be signed. And then I can send those out to the department heads to share with their departments. And at the same time, I'm going to ask them to look at the personnel policy and send any requests that they have as well.
And the personnel policy is about this thick?
Yeah.
And I think there's some things in there that are outdated because it's been around a while.
Very much so. There's a lot of things in there that need to be explained better as well, so.
Henry Woods, building roof discussion, and I will go to Richard and Mark on that thing.
Well, back in the, I found some shingles out front, and I got the police drone. They were nice enough to come up and fly it over the roof. We have some missing shingles up in the middle somewhere up there. And we really haven't done anything to address it. And I do think it's pretty important, you know, they're not going to get any, they're not going to fix themselves. And we've got to get somebody up there to fix it before it gets worse.
Do you think we should have, you know, a company get up there and take a look before the snow flies?
Mm-hmm, definitely.
Is that a slate roof?
No, it's, it used to be slate. When it was replaced, it was make-believe, looked like slate.
When the elevator got put in, they took the slate off.
Yeah.
Because I have a big pile of slate that I've been sitting on.
But you were hoping we were going to put it on the roof, or?
No, it was something that someone was, had available from a slate company. And they asked me if I wanted it. I thought, did they have land? I thought I'd store it with no particular. I also have soapstone that I was going to use for a floor sometime, but I haven't done it.
Don't do it. I have soapstone, and I spend my life cleaning soapstone.
On the floor of the bathroom?
Just say it, don't do it. Yes, don't do it.
With heating underneath?
I thought it was, yes. I thought it was a great idea, till I had it.
But isn't it nicer warm when you're on the ground?
I don't care if it's warm or not, it's dirty. And it's hard to keep clean, very hard. Anyway, nobody cares about that, but just to say, the soapstone will not find its way into my home again.
So, we want to get a contract? How do you want to handle that?
Well, I would suspect we have a couple locals that have been, just gave us some information on the roof down at the salt shed.
Correct.
We could start there. Kid Lucco's a big operation. They were the ones who got the contract and did the library. And they did the repair. Kid Lucco did the repair at the town hall maybe three years ago now. So they do a lot of community work. I know that they, with other locals, would go up, look and say, yeah, this is really bad, or at least give us an idea about what engineering company could, you know, we could vote to authorize, to give us some free information.
But do we need to do an RFP, or?
Well, we will.
Or just the plumber, we're just going to ask them, the plumber, you go on the roof?
Yeah, because they may say, we can replace these six shingles and don't worry about it for the season.
We should ask somebody to take a look.
Well, the scope of the job isn't really that vast up there, but it just has to be done. You know, from what I can see from the-
We've got a lot of ability, so we won't have to tie the roof, they fall off, and they're just looking at three shingles that fell off.
Getting up there. It's 40 feet up.
Well, you know, the library roof, they had lifts and so forth that they used for that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, one way to get up there is to get the fire ladder. That's the way, the library, we brought them over. And they brought the ladder up there, and we were able to get contractors up there to look at the roof.
And save $1,500 on renting a lift.
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, so just that we need to get the roof before snow flies. So that at our next meeting, perhaps we'll have something to vote on. Employees evaluation discussion, Melanie, is that yours? Or is that-
Um, yeah. Do we do them? Rich and I were talking about them.
I would say the answer to that is, I think some of the individual, no, I would suspect last year DPW did not have any, that was the place where they really spent a lot of time with evaluations. The fire department did them. Again, I don't know because we were between fire chiefs at that point. So I don't know what happened there. As far as, we were in between three different TAs. And I would suspect your team was not probably evaluating.
Okay. But typically, they've been done in the past?
I would say typically, probably not, at least in this building.
Okay.
Would you say that's fair?
Well, I'd like to see them get done, for all the departments. Maybe Melanie has some kind of standardized form that department heads could work off of.
Indeed, I do.
I think it's important-
Oh, definitely.
-for professional development, for growth, for a whole lot of reasons. And when I was a fire chief, I had to sit and write 30 of them.
I would just say that there's particular language in the contracts relative to the chief of police, what he does with his team, the same thing with DPW. And I know those weren't done last year because we were in transition. So the fire department, again, that is part of their personnel stuff. I know that's been done in the past. I know it probably wasn't done this year because we had one chief leaving and another chief coming on on April 1st, so. So, yeah, it'll be something that we'll hear more about, right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, now we come to what people have come here for this evening, I believe. A possible vote on the offer to purchase 1,000 West Street. And I think that would be something that, Melanie, if you could walk us through and other board members could provide information, and the people who are here obviously have questions and concerns and so on and so forth.
So I wasn't here for this. Is Nathan here?
He just-
So I wasn't here for the start of this whole process. So I don't have much initial information on it. I did print out for you the information from our software as far as what it's valued at, what the tax title account is at, which is $75,419.67. So that would need to be satisfied with any sale price initially. The initial, is this the new contract?
It's the new one, it's $114.
Okay, yeah. So the initial contract came in with the town, with wanting the town to pay closing costs, which I do not recommend happen because then you're setting a precedent to pay closing costs for every foreclosed property. And our tax title attorney, Ron Berenson, agrees as well. He's the one that would do all the closing paperwork for us, and he estimates it would be about $2,500 to do it. So it looks like, should we wait for Nathan to come back to represent your- Okay, here he comes. So, it looks like the buyer agrees to pay the sum of $81,000. Nathan gets 8% net from the sale. So, we will just barely break even.
Make taxes, yeah.
But it's also, I'm not sure how long is this spent on the market for?
Since June, maybe. May of June, somewhere around there.
Yeah, so six months.
It was early in the summer.
It only offered that underwear.
Yes. As far as I know, it's the only offer that we've had. So, rather than just sit on a property that, you know, may or may not sell for more at some point in time.
It needs extensive cleanup. We all know that.
I would say get rid of it.
Yeah. And that would, and that would be their responsibility, correct?
Yes.
Not ours.
Yep. And puts it back on the tax?
Yeah, and every...
Tax rule, so...
I mean, an average house of $350,000, $400,000, you're gonna give around $6,000. So, $3,000 every six months, wherever $3,000 away, you know what I mean? We didn't, but it's, it's going, it's a lot sticking, so...
And I believe I've spoken with each of you separately about Mr. Fournier doing a, Fournier doing a park on the land, which he has, he wrote him a letter of permission outlining a few conditions, and he signed a release from liability, a whole, full harmless release for doing that.
Now, is it true that you're gonna have to, you would like to use it for your business? And thus, would there have to be some zoning changes on this?
So, my first plan is to clean property up, give it all the trash, give it a campers, make it look good again. Eventually, I would, I will bring it to the planning board to have it rezoned from R82 to commercial. But that's gonna be a work in progress with cleaning it all up and getting it ready for that.
And you're, I see your company is a tree company, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're a tree service.
And you are currently with your tree company on Pleasant Street, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, White Terrace Commercial, right?
White Terrace Commercial on Mr. Graves, I believe.
Mr. Graves as well, so it's not like explosive. I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
So, two adjacent properties.
Two adjacent, two abutting properties are zoned commercially.
Yep.
And looking at online, that Melanie sent me the link to, it only needs 130 feet of frontage to go commercial. That property's at 137. So, even if I wanted to put a house, I want to say I'd have to get a variance because it doesn't meet the new zoning regulation.
Now, is it your intention to put homes?
If it's not zoned, if I can't switch it to commercial, yes, we will most likely put a house on it.
Okay. So...
I make a motion that we accept the offer as presented.
Melanie, do you have any other concerns that have been brought to your attention by our attorney or anything?
No.
So, okay.
And what is the offer, exactly?
Um, you have a contract in your packet. I don't really wanna read the whole thing.
I think we get about, with closing costs, about 62, about, it says 69 is the valuation. Assess land value, 5810, 69.
Did you pay?
I already had a good...
Yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to auth, or to accept the contract as prepared for the transfer of this property to...
1,000 West Street.
Yeah, we have 1,000 West Street, but to Joe, what is, will it be to you, Joe, or is there a corporation or?
It will be my in-laws are purchasing it.
Okay.
It'll be in their name. And then, once it's paid, I'll pay it off and switch it to the tree service.
Gotcha.
Did you want their name?
Yeah, that's mine. Well, thank you. So, this will be Patricia R. Cokie and John J. Cokie, Sr. Town Farm Road, Winchton, Mass. would be actually the purchasers, correct?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you. We have a motion made and seconded to authorize the purchase of the property on 1,000 West Street to Patricia R. Cokie and John J. Cokie, Sr., 31 Town Farm Road, Winchton, Massachusetts, 01475. We have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Anything, Mark?
I'm good.
Anything? Hear any none? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, looks like a vote.
Congrats.
Thank you.
I can't wait till you start cleaning it up.
Yeah. Your neighbors will be very happy.
As the paper gets signed, you'll see all the fleet of trucks going right there.
I love it. I love it.
Yeah.
That'll be great. We know some people who'll be applauding who live near you, who have you, near you now. So, that'd be great. Okay. Holiday schedule for town departments, we're seeking a vote. And Melanie, could you describe what we've decided, which was a night four-hour...
Half-day.
A half-day. And that's four hours for people, obviously, working the eight-hour day. So, if you start at 7:00 a.m., it's four hours, and then you can go home before the holidays.
Well, unless you were 10 hours.
Yeah. Well, okay, you got a 10-hour...
So, that's why we're just saying a half a day from what you normally work.
Gotcha.
Good point.
Okay. It gets very sticky.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of people doing a lot of work. Okay. So, that is for the day before Thanksgiving, and that is for the day before Christmas, correct?
And New Year's.
And New Year's.
Yep.
That's usually...
Okay, so we have discussion, have a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize town employees to take a half a day on Wednesday, November 26th, the day before Thanksgiving, Wednesday, December 24th, the day before Christmas or Christmas Eve, and Wednesday, December 31st, New Year's Eve.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to authorize the use of a half-day schedule on the Wednesday, November 26th, day before Thanksgiving, December 24th, Christmas Eve, and December 31st, New Year's Eve for all town employees. That would be one half of the day generally assigned for. Those in favor?
Aye.
I wanna say thank you for that, because that's very generous of the board to offer all three of those half-days.
Well, I seldom, if ever, have asked anybody out of beyond their work hours to do something that they haven't done.
Right.
So, work goes both ways, and we're thankful for the work that they do.
Employees and departments, so...
And we have a couple resignations just to authorize here. We have the Council on Aging, a resignation for Susan Milkman, and a Council on Aging resignation of Barry Almond. I believe the town administrators had the opportunity to chat with at least one of them.
I have spoken with Mr. Almond. We had a really good conversation. He spoke very highly of Betty Jo. But he does have concerns that the Council on Aging is only advisory and is not able to advise in any capacity. Ms. Milkman, I have not spoken to her yet. She is on my list to call.
Okay, so we have the resignations to, we have a motion to accept those?
Yeah, I'm going to approve the Council on Aging resignation of Susan Milkman and Barry Almond.
So, we have a motion made and seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded to accept the resignations of Susan Milkman and Barry Almond from the Council on Aging. Those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the Council on Aging appointment application, we have David Raymond, who has, is seeking to serve on the council to have the opportunity to appoint him potentially this evening. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we appoint David S. Raymond to the Council on Aging.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to appoint David S. Raymond to serve on the Council on Aging, and that appointment to be effective immediately. Those in favor?
Aye.
We have a wage authorization for a new cemetery clerk. And that wage authorization is for Amy Cassavan, cemetery clerk, up to 10 hours per week at $20.50 per hour.
It's all correct, and at last.
Oh, we're correct.
She's gonna be great. She really is.
I'll make a motion to, for a wage authorization for Amy Cassavan, cemetery clerk, 10 hours a week, $20.50 per hour.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to appoint at a rate of $20.50 per hour, Amy Cassavan as the cemetery clerk, effective immediately. Those...